Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 20th, 2024 Tom Water City Council meeting. And with that, we will go ahead and do roll call.
Councilmember Lea Adalhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
I'm present. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Jefferson will lead us in our pledge.
Everyone, please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, next is proclamation. And uh, this is the proclamation for the American Red Cross month of March, 2024. And we are kicking it off a little early. So uh, Councilmember Dahlhoff will read this.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas in the aftermath of the Civil War, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross. Its national headquarters, just a few blocks from the White House, was built as a memorial to the women of the Civil War. And whereas for nearly 143 years, the employees, volunteers, and supporters of the American Red Cross have met loss and disaster with compassion and care. They remind us that we must leave no one behind. During March of this year, we celebrate the ordinary citizens who perform extraordinary acts of service. And we honor the Red Cross for its commitment to making our country and world a better place. And whereas across America, we have seen the work of the Red Cross firsthand. When hurricanes made landfall and floodwaters rise, the Red Cross is ready to provide food, shelter, and emergency supplies. When wildfires spread and tornadoes uproot communities, volunteers arrive from around the country to help survivors heal, recover, and rebuild. And whereas we have also turned to the American Red Cross to respond to crisis overseas in wake of natural disasters and in preparation for emergencies before they happen. The old saying is still true today. The Red Cross is always there. And whereas during American Red Cross Month, all Americans are encouraged to learn more about donating blood, learning first aid, and participating in events to prevent home fires. It is in our community's DNA to lift each other up, especially on the front lines of emergencies and disasters. And therefore Debbie Sullivan, the mayor of the city of Tom Water, does hereby proclaim the month of March, 2024, American Red Cross Month. And she encourages all community members to observe this month with relevant programs, ceremonies, and activities, and to support the work of the service of the American Red Cross.
Great, thank you. And we have Chris, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name. Uh, come to the podium and uh, you are representing the Red Cross. I will bring down the proclamation.
Do I start? Hi, I am Chris Mather. I am a regional program manager for the American Red Cross. And I just want to thank you guys for having me and proclaiming March as American Red Cross Month. We cannot do it without our donations or our volunteers. And with that, I just wanted to share a couple more things um, that I think everybody would really find astounding. And so the Red Cross um, responds to more than 60,000 disasters a year. And with that, it makes it about every eight minutes, the Red Cross is responding to families that have um, had a home fire or other disasters. And in a day, it's 170 um, Red Cross response to those family members. That's absolutely amazing. And we also, of course, can't forget about blood. And so we have 40% of our nation's blood supply. And so with that, it's 4.5 million blood donations annually. And of course, last but not least, service to the armed forces, which is close to my heart, being a veteran. We have over 1,500 services to active duty families and veterans. So I just want to thank you all for recognizing the Red Cross today.
All right, next item on the agenda is public comment, and I did not see anyone signed up for the public comment portion. Uh, did anyone in online?
No.
No? So if anyone in the audience is interested in making public comment, now would be the time to come to the podium. All right, with that, we will move to the consent calendar. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Dahlhoff, seconded by Councilmember um, Swarthout. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, nay? All right, with that, we approve the minutes of the city council meeting of January 27th. Approve the minutes of the city council or the retreat of January 27th. Uh, the council, uh, city council meeting of February 6th. Payment vouchers, uh, an interlocal agreement with the Port of Olympia for the Bush Prairie Habitat Conservation Plan, HCP Amendment Number Three. Interlocal agreement with the city of Lacey, the city of Olympia, the city of Tenino, the city of Young, Thurston County, and Thurston Regional Planning Council in support of the housing element updates. The 2023-2025 Stormwater Capacity Grant from the Washington State Department of Ecology. And Israel Road and Linderson Way Pedestrian and Bike Improvement Project Local Agency Federal Aid um, prospectus. So with that, we're going to now move to council considerations. And with that, I have staff, I think Bill, are you coming to do the presentation for that? And?
Hello, Mayor. I'm gonna be running the presentation from uh, and then Bill will be playing a little bit of tag team.
Perfect. Thank you, Dan. So Dan, Dan Smith, go ahead.
All right, so let me get my screen shared up here. I can't uh, I don't, and I can't see also, if anybody have any questions, please just uh, you know, I guess jump out there and ask.
I, I will go ahead and recognize him, Dan, and you'll be aware.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Um, all right, let's see here. So let's go to the beginning here. Let's start at the beginning. That's usually a good place to do it. So hopefully y'all can see my screen. This is um.
Yeah, we see it within, there you go. Perfect.
Uh, okay. Zoom is telling me it's quitting on me. Hopefully I'm still here. Okay, am I still here?
Yeah, you're still here. Oh. We, we lost the presentation, Dan.
Apologies, I keep getting kicked out but from Zoom for some reason. We'll try this again. Hopefully this will work and everybody is, can see what I can see.
All right, here's. We see the presentation. Thank you.
Excellent. I'm here to talk tonight about Southeast Water Reservoir Service Agreement. Um, this is the, one of the larger projects. Kidding me? Can you still see?
Yeah, but it's, but it's catchy. You're freezing, Dan. Bill, you may end up doing this. I think he's really locked up. We'll give it a minute, let Bill get. Do you, does, uh, do you have access to the presentation? Oh, Dan, Dan is back.
Yeah, Zoom keeps kicking me out, so I apologize for the technical difficulties. I'm just gonna move ahead without using the presentation. I don't know if Bill has a copy, maybe loaded up on a laptop there.
So I think, uh, I think staff can do it for you if you.
Okay, fantastic.
Yeah, so I'll have staff bring it up.
I think Melody has a copy of it as well. That's fantastic. So we, we originally, I'll just uh, continue, just going by way of a little bit of background here for y'all. Uh, we originally presented this to Public Works Committee um, earlier in the month. Um, and we're recognizing that um, this is probably one of the more significant projects that uh, the city water utility has undertaken. Um, in the city, uh, in general, in many, many years. Uh, this project entails um, the construction of a three million gallon um, potable water reservoir um, on the southeast uh, extent of town. Uh, where we anticipated uh, when the last two water system plans that we'd see the highest level of, of growth. Uh, and so you know, as a, as you, as you want to create, create a whole system that supports, you know, the entire community. Um, you, you spread these uh, these facilities um, throughout the, the service area. Um, as you likely know, we have um, three um, uh, water tanks currently. We have two welded steel stand pipe tanks up on Tom Water Hill. You might, you might notice the tree tank that is actually um, a welded steel tank. Has the trees painted on the side. That's a million gallon tank. A smaller one that you might not see as easily is another um, uh, million gallon tank there. And then we have a large concrete um, storage tank, a little bit farther down the hill on, on Tom Water Hill there, which is a four million gallon tank. Uh, thank you, Melody. Um, perfect, perfect spot. And so these, these tanks, they serve a variety of purposes, um, you know, for the city, um, most of which is obviously to provide uh, water service. Um, operational services for our community. Um, it helps us meet uh, what we call equalization storage. This is um, to kind of meet those peak hour demands. And so we have our, kind of our static, just everyday use, but then, you know, early in the morning when everybody gets up and gets ready for work. Um, uh, we see a high, we see a high peak then, or we see high peak hour demands in the summertime um, as well. So we have equalization um, uh, service that these, that these reservoirs provide for us. And then of course, uh, probably the one that everybody thinks about the most is for fire suppression. Uh, so these are sized appropriately to meet those. And then we have what they call standby, which is just emergency storage. So we think of like, you know, those peak hour days, or those peak days, and you know, some excessive, excessive uses. Maybe we have a, a significantly hot day with a fire that might break out somewhere. We want to make sure that we have some emergency storage uh, available in there as well. Uh, next slide, please. On that last slide too, you also noticed the um, uh, the inactive storage tank we have. Uh, that we actually use currently, we keep that there and that, that serves the utility for mobile communications. And so there's a lot of uh, telecommunications equipment that's now stored on that, uh, but we no longer use that as a water tank. Um, so this, this, this project, this project was first conceptualized in our 2010 uh, water system uh, plan update. And then it was reviewed and resized in the 2021 uh, plan. And the 2010 plan was originally conceived to be a 2.5 million gallon reservoir tank. Um, as our community grew, as we identified additional uh, potential demands in the future. Um, that was, it was warranted to upgrade to a three million gallon tank. And so that's what is currently called for um, in the, in the plan itself. Now, we need this, as I mentioned, you know, community growth. Um, you know, we need a plan for the future. We know our community is going to grow. Um, and so we've modeled those into the forecasts. We, we look at not only residential um, develop, uh, growth, we also model in um, uh, commercial growth. And so we want to make sure that we have the resources necessary. Um, not only the water that we, you know, have the rights and the, and the water capacity to pull out of the ground. We actually have that water in a storage uh, to provide that, kind of some of that balance throughout those peak demands, as I mentioned, as I've talked about earlier. Um, and we're gonna be bringing on additional sources as well, as, as the community continues to grow, looking at new wells. We're undertaking a project right now to bring the brewery well field um, on, on, uh, online um, over the next couple of years. And so as we bring on more sources, the community grows, we need, we need additional storage to support the system. Storage also helps support uh, water quality improvements. And so uh, we're making sure that, you know, we have enough uh, uh, flow in the system, enough balanced flow in the system to improve, to make sure the water quality. Um, you know, maintains um, as it's needed. And then of course, last but not least, uh, community safety and that fire flow. You know, we mentioned earlier, we want to make sure that we have enough water on hand to deal with those emergencies as they might pop up. Um, so you can see that little image underneath our four, the picture of our four million gallon concrete tank on Tom Water Hill. That image uh, below shows basically new sources coming online that news, that new storage would be able to um, assist us with. And we have a, a proposed northeast well field, which um, uh, we're, it's uh, potentially, we're gonna be looking at those as new sources. But these are just kind of proposed areas where we, we anticipate growth and service needing. We have a southwest well field. We have a brewery well field, as I mentioned. And then we have two existing uh, water sources that we want to uh, convert to potable use and bring online um, here in the near future. And all those would be utilized for our uh, water system or utilized by the new uh, uh, storage reservoir. Next slide, please. Um, so as I mentioned, what do we need? We need a three million gallon tank reservoir. Um, you know, for that is the primary component of the improvements that are considered under this project. Uh, but not only uh, do we need a reservoir, we also need the infrastructure to move that water. Uh, you get the water to the reservoir and then move that water from the reservoir through our community. Uh, primarily on that south, uh, the southeast and, and moving towards the southwest uh, portion of town, the city limits. Uh, our service area is actually the urban growth boundary. It is not just the city limits. And so we are, as we, as we consider what these improvements look like, we are considering the service area. Um, you know, which extends, like I said, all the way through to the, through the UGA. Um, obviously, the benefits of this is we're gonna increase our potable water storage. We're gonna increase our ability to serve on a daily basis. Uh, we're gonna stabilize water pressures in the 350 zone. The 350 zone is really just an elevation mark. Um, and that is the, that is the zone, the 350 zone is the one that serves the greatest number of customers, both residential and commercials throughout our city. Uh, you notice the, the Tom Water Hill, we have those tanks on Tom Water Hill. Those are at even higher elevation zones and serving residents and commercials. Uh, commercial um, properties that live or that, that uh, are sighted at a higher elevation as well. So we want to make sure that these are sighted in the right place. Um, with that visioning that took place in 2010, that water system plan update, the city has already purchased property. It is in that southwest area of town. Um, and is that, is set at an elevation uh, appropriate to serve that 350 zone. Which is again, the, the, the area of our, our, our greatest growth that we're gonna see. Um, public safety and then obviously supporting new development. So as residents and businesses move into town. You know, we are trying to get ahead of um, uh, those new customers. And so that way, you know, when they get here, the water is here and available for, for both residential and commercial needs. Uh, next, next slide, please.
Uh, Councilmember Rothuser has a question.
Thanks, Dan. I, I asked this when we had the, the meeting at, at Public Works. But can you talk a little bit, maybe you're going to get to it eventually in the presentation, but the opportunity for latecomer fees for those new developments that come online down the road as well in terms of cost offsets?
Sure. Um, so yeah, that is, is part of the funding um, kind of considerations. Um, as you know, the city installs water mains. Um, you know, there are not only the connection fees that the city recovers to, um, you know, as the kind of historical investment into the water system by our new customers. Um, there's also latecomers. So if there is a property that is purchased, um, that is adjacent to the water main in particular, which you can see a lot of it here. And eventually Bill will uh, pop up to, you know, can take, take over from, from here, walk you through what the project elements are gonna be. But any property that you see kind of abutting, these water mains, you know, on this, on this slide here. Um, would be charged at what we call a kind of a special assessment. And those are like, just like anybody else, whether it's a private developer extending that water main or that sewer main. Um, or the city is doing, the city does it. Um, the city is reimbursed at the, the property, the, the length of main that crosses that property. Um, it would be as if um, it was installed by that property owner themselves. Um, and so that the city would recover, be able to recover those costs. Now, the difference, the main difference between a developer um, uh, latecomer agreement and a city latecomer agreement is that the city latecomer agreement never expires. If this was done by a private developer, uh, let's say somebody moving in, needing to extend the mains, those, those latecomer agreements would expire after 20 years. But the cities um, do not have an expiration date um, as private ones do, so. Uh, so yes, that's part of the funding consideration, but as, those are kind of long-term costs that are recovered, um, you know, over time. And I guess with that, ready for the project overview. Turn it over to Bill.
Good evening, uh, councilmembers. I'm going to talk a little bit about the overall project and this is, this is a consultant project, so I'll talk about the design.
Oh, I think Councilmember Kathy has her hand raised. Sorry, Councilmember Kathy?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to ask this question before, uh, I didn't know if Dan was taking off or freezing up or what he was gonna do next. Uh, the, um, could you clear up for um, any community members live, uh, li- listening to us or who are gonna read minutes or something about this uh, water lease business we have with uh, the possibility of an industrial user? And I believe that's out in the um, port property. Is that correct?
Well, that would be, that would be a lease with the port, so we don't have anything to do with the lease that is with the port in and of themselves. Um, our duty as a water provider is to, to provide water. Um, it's basically a, a simple three test. Do we have the capacity? Um, is the use legal and um, can we serve the property in the time that they need to, they, they need that water? Um, if you can answer that three-part test, then you have to provide that service. Um, you know, the city utility does not have um, uh, I guess any say in how that water gets used. Um, as long as it's an appropriate and legal application for the water, the city has the capacity to serve. We have a duty to serve. And that's what, and so basically, basically they'll call that the duty is to serve. Um, and so I know there is a large industrial user that is being proposed, you know, for the area. Uh, we have not seen that application come into the city for that, um, you know, for the consideration of service. Um, however, you know, the city is in a position to be able to provide that water um, today and into the future. Um, you know, but as communities grow, um, you need to plan for these kinds of uses. Um, you know, we, in our last water system plan, our last few water system plan, system updates, we've always included two 1 million gallon uh, a day, uh, large industrial users. Um, and that's just how we've classified it. We did not know who they were, what they were, what they could be using that water for, whether it's a, a water bottler or a, a server farm that needs cooling water. Um, for various things. We just anticipate, you know, as we, as we go through our planning processes. You know, the need for large industrial users coming into the city of Tom Water. And so we plan for those. And so we, we make sure that, you know, we're building our system to support that growth. Uh, both on a residential basis and a commercial basis and industrial basis. And we, we continue to progress through our planning and our projects, just as you see here with this. As if those, you know, if those uses were uh, viable and active and coming online. Um, you just, so, so as we're in today, in today's, in today's environment, so to speak, is where we're at. Um, you know, we have been planning for these large users to come on since 2010, if not earlier. Um, and earlier iterations of our, of our water system planning processes.
So your consideration is also the amount of water that they want and for how long? Is that it?
It's not necessarily for how long. We just make sure that we have the capacity to serve that need. Um, you know, so you know, theoretically, you know, users are gonna come and go over time, you know, can, you know, we don't have the crystal ball to say, okay, when that 1 million gallon day user might not be there again. But regardless, you know, once you've planned for that 1 million gallon a day user, or two, what, what our planning process has always been is one, whereas two, 1 million gallon a day. Um, industrial users into the future generally spread out about, you know, five to eight years. Um, you know, as we look at that planning horizon, um, we don't plan for there was a drop off. So we build capacity, we acquire water rights, we do conservation, we take other measures, you know, into our, into our water uh, production portfolio to make sure that we can continue to serve those needs into the future. Again, regardless of how many is there, if, if one drops off, another one comes on, you know, we, you know, we don't, we don't play, we don't like, kind of like, we just kind of plan for the uses that might be there in front of us.
Uh, another question about that. Um, so you say you don't, you don't, uh, you didn't say you don't care, but you don't pay that much attention to what they do with it. Uh, you know, what kind, like you said, bottling plant or this or that or the other. So making those decisions, there is no taking into consideration environmental impacts?
Well, tho- those theoretically would be taken up through the SEPA process and through the zoning and, and, you know, kind of the community development process. If it is a legal, if it is a legally zoned property and is legally zoned um, industrial use, the water utility has a duty to serve. It's irrespective of anything that comes along with that duty to serve. Um, you know, the city, uh, we don't have the, we, again, that doesn't, it's not part of the consideration. But you know, the question comes in, do you have X amount of gallons per day to be able to meet this demand? Do you have the infrastructure to be able to support that? And if the answer is yes, then we have to serve it.
So it is community development that sees if this particular whatever that's coming in um, of fits with our in- environmental requirements?
Yes, because any, any development that comes into the city is gonna go through a permitting review. Um, and it's gonna have to, you know, make all the determinations and, and go through those processes, just like any other business, industry, residential subdivision. You know, has to evaluate, you know, for uh, traffic impacts, park impacts, school impacts, you know, environmental impacts, air quality, soil quality. All of those things get evaluated, you know, through that permitting process um, you know, that we have for, for every, every commercial business that comes into the city.
Okay, so just, so where, you know, where that is and everything. And then when you do some of this work that you're doing now, or you were saying bring other um, wells or so forth online. Does this uh, then br- bring up that you're, I don't know, checking, I don't know all the words to use. But uh, the, our, um, our underground water sources and uh, you know, cause there's a lot of literature out now about what's happening with groundwater. And um, some areas.
Right, whenever we have to apply for, for a new water right, you know, the city has to undergo a fairly extensive, which is why one of these things take many years for the city to um, you know, to go through, uh, we go through a fairly extensive mitigation analysis. Uh, we have to look at the impacts to the aquifers, which is the underground water. You have to look at impacts to surface waters. Um, you know, as you pump water out of the ground, it has, it has a connection to, excuse me, to like uh, the creeks and the rivers. And we gotta make sure that there is no net environmental impact um, through the, through the, through new water rights. Um, you know, right now, the city is, is looking at source development and what that, what that's gonna look like over the next, you know, 10 years. We have a consultant that we've hired uh, to kind of uh, help us look at, you know, every potential opportunity. Um, from, you know, new water, so to speak, uh, like new water rights, not necessarily new water, all the water we have is the water we've got. And, and water will always have, but we want to know, you know, what the impacts is. Um, you know, that if we're gonna have a new withdrawal coming out. We're also looking at, you know, acquisition of existing water rights um, that we could put to a better beneficial use. Um, you know, for the entire community. Uh, we're looking at retiring other rights. We're looking at reclaim water as a potential resource. We're looking at uh, conservation, uh, how much um, water could be saved through conservation programs, uh, both internal uh, to a, to a household or a business. Uh, more external and, and uh, savings from, you know, reduced irrigation needs in, in some areas. And so we're looking at, you know, we really have, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're throwing everything on the wall. We're seeing what's there, what's gonna be the most feasible for the city. Um, to look at developing that's new source. At the same time, the city is looking at, you know, is, is, is kicking into high gear, our uh, brewery wellfield development project. We have consulted on board right now. We're looking at um, installing some wells down in, in the brewery uh, or the golf course area and the brewery wellfield area. Uh, you know, so that hopefully by 2027, 2028, we have uh, new sources that are operational based on existing water rights that the city has in its portfolio, but just needs to put into active use. And so then, and then there's also uh, the golf course uh, water rights that the city, that the utility, the water utility acquired a couple of years back. Um, those also need to be put into active use. And so, you know, there's a handful of things that we could do today. Uh, based on the water that we exist, that we currently um, already have right and access to, you know, for our community. And so those, those are kind of the low hanging fruit. We need to put into, we need to put into use, into use. And then we'd be looking at, you know, probably a, a prioritization based off of um, you know, ease, which would probably be, you know, looking at conservation and access to, to reclaim water in different ways, you know, both industrial use. Uh, you know, or, you know, other, other ways that you could use recycled water. Um, you know, many, many communities are finding, you know, uh, recycled water has a lot of value in their community. And so we're, we're starting to kind of question, well, how, how could that be used um, in our community as well? And so um, those are probably gonna be easier avenues than finding new water, so to speak, finding a new water right. Um, we live in a closed basin, which means we can't have any withdrawals that are going to affect surface water supplies between the peak demand periods. And that's when we need the most water. Um, so new, new water is going to be a significant challenge. And so we really want to like, look at all of our other sources and stretch everything as far as we possibly can before we have to, you know, really try and attempt a new water right. I think we, we learned a little bit of that lesson um, as we investigated the Southeast Well Field and what the mitigation plan needed to look like. Um, we couldn't mitigate enough, um, you know, for those impacts that we were, we were identifying, which really kind of opened up the, the whole picture. It was like I said, we're doing that source, that source project, source development project now, to really kind of take a step back and look at, look at all of the pictures of the puzzle, pieces of the puzzle.
Yeah. Well, thanks for that, um, Dan. I, I appreciate it. And I think that you're working in an area that uh, water has become liquid gold as we look forward to the future. And especially with, you know, the climate change and the planet heating up. So you're in a very, very key position and um, I'm glad at you. So thank you.
Thanks. All right, no more questions. I'll kick this over to Bill and he'll kind of walk you through what the project, uh, what the project specifically is gonna look like. And then I'll come back at the end there. Alright, no more questions. I'll kick this over to Bill and he'll kind of walk you through what the project, uh, what the project specifically is gonna look like. And then I'll come back at the end there, talk a little bit about. Um, kind of the larger financial piece, uh, you know, for this as well.
Alright, so um. The first thing I wanted to do is talk about the project as a whole. Um, the project's actually kind of two main components. The first component is the construction of the water reservoir. Um, the site access road to get us to ninety third from the reservoir. And then the connection into the existing uh, water main on ninety third. So in the drawing there, you can see there's a existing segment of water main that's kind of the broken up blue section. Um, that's in front of the preserve development. Um, so that's kind of phase one is, is uh, the reservoir, the access road and tying it into ninety third. Um, the second phase of the project is to um. Uh, create a loop system. And um, right now, um, there isn't a water main system that runs all the way down ninety third and heads all the way up. Um, old highway ninety nine. So there are some segments that have been built from developments over time. Um, but this project would actually complete those infill sections on ninety third and on ninety nine. And um, and create that water loop that we need, the water main loop, uh, to tie into the new water reservoir. Um, as you can see on here, the big component of that on ninety third is the uh, the Kimmy to uh, Snowdrop Avenue. And that's about ninety five hundred feet of sixteen inch water main. Um, and then up on uh, ninety nine, there's about a two thousand foot segment just south of River Drive that we need to complete. And then we also have a portion that, that needs to be completed to tie that water main into ninety third. So this is kind of a, a blow up of the, the actual water uh, reservoir location. Um, and I wanted to present this because the first thing is that. This, this is actually in Thurston County, so it's outside of the city limits. Um, so hence that means that our permitting is through Thurston County, uh, for this component of the project. Um, the city, uh, in the past, the city acquired the piece of property that the water reservoir is gonna actually sit on. Um, and then there's a private property in between that property and ninety third. Um, that's gonna remain private property, however, in two thousand and twelve, there was a road and utility easement that was acquired. Um, so we have an easement to present the access road to ninety third, so that easement's in place. Um, the, the access road itself is in, it's not a straight shot, it's actually curved. And the reason why is cause our elevation difference is so much different. From uh, the actual where the reservoir sits to where ninety third is. So to keep the grades down on the road. The access road was, was uh, looped around, um, and made a little bit longer. So we were, um, it was advantageous to us that. Um, RH two engineering uh, came out as the most qualified during the selection process for the project. Um, RH two engineering is an extremely uh, well-respected engineering firm. Uh, they do, this is the type of work that they do, uh, water systems and water reservoirs. Um, uh, the city has utilized RH two in the past and has had good experiences with them. And they are also very familiar with the city's actual water system. So that's gonna make it much easier to move forward with the project. So the prime con- the prime consultant on the project will be RH two. Um, RH two also has some sub consultants, HDR engineering. Will be completing permitting services and pre-designed services during the project. Uh, Sage Geotechnical will be completing the geotechnical investigation and analysis. And then we also have Sitsin Hill engineers who will be completing the top, top, topographic survey for the project.
Uh, I, I think council member Dahlhoff has a question, but.
I just have a question, whoever wants to field it. Just thinking about when. Developing or using our land. And you noted the elevation difference and why the road is projected as it is. Is there discussion of what trees to save like on those spots? Does that come into discussion of like? More larger, you know, older trees we wanna keep for se- sequestration, right? Our climate. Plan that we're gonna do, does that come into play in that development of what trees we can save and ones, ones have to come down?
Yeah, I, I think in the current situation, the easement's been established. So if we build within the easement, then the trees within the easement will have to. Be removed. Unless we wanted to change these.
Okay, thank you.
So um, the project itself has been separated into three design phases. Um, we did this when we were working with a consultant. Um, so phase A one is uh, the water tank design, and that includes the site improvements for the water tank. The access road to ninety third, and it also includes the water connection to ninety third. And then it does include a, the segment on oh, highway ninety nine. Um, just south of River Ridge. So, so there's like a, a two thousand two hundred foot segment that needs to be constructed. Um, I'll explain that in just a moment. Um, phase A two is the actual work on ninety third avenue. That's our nine thousand five hundred feet of water main we need to install on ninety third. And then phase A three is the water main work from the reservoir to um, highway ninety nine. So, the reason why we phased the project was mostly from a, a funding standpoint. Um, currently, the project can be built um. With phase one first and the tank will still function. Um, and then follow it up with phases A two and A three, depending on when, when funding becomes available. Um, the, uh, currently the water system out in that area. It, it's a kind of odd, but it, it comes off of ninety nine and it runs through the preserve and it loops around. So there's actually a water main that, that extends from, from uh, up on ninety nine down to ninety third. And the water main segment that was installed as part of the preserve is actually active. So, um. Hence, the reason why we can do phase A one, we can tie into that system and it'll tie into ninety nine. And the system will still function like it's supposed to. So from a design scope standpoint, um, it's pretty. Pretty basic items that we have to do as far as um, designing of the project. We have our project survey, which is our topographic survey. Um, they're gonna be doing hydraulic modeling, and that modeling is both. Modeling of the existing system that we have out there, and then modeling the uh, the system with the, the reservoir tank. Um, and that's really to determine uh, to make sure that that system is gonna provide the appropriate pressure, the appropriate flows. And, and another component, which is the actual cycling of the tank for water quality. So that's a big part of all of this. Um, we did include a preliminary design component for this uh, design, which. Is really kind of a pre-design and the idea there is, is that, that's when we're going to um, look at value engineering components on the project. And also do our tank selection. Um, one of the big components from a cost standpoint on this project is, is a tank gonna be either a steel tank or is it gonna be a concrete tank? And that has to do with not only materials at the time when we're doing the estimates. But also affects eh, you, the long-term maintenance is a component of that as well. So both tanks are, are good, they just have, each one has its own limitation. Um, geotechnical is really, from a seismic standpoint, that's really important on this project, cause we're putting the water tank up on the top of a hill. Um, and then we also have a lot of bedrock out in that area, so we're gonna have to map bedrock and determine wh- where we have to deal with bedrock when it comes to. Installation of the water mains. Um, permitting, like I said, is primarily, the main, main permitting is through Thurston County, but. With that said, the project has a uh, large number of permits required for the, in order to, in order to permit this project. Um, everything from SEPA to all the environmental permitting. Um, and we also have Department of Health permitting, so all of that permitting has been identified and vetted. And is in our actual consultant agreement right now. Um, water tank design, that's just the design of the tank that we select. Our design plan, specifications and cost estimate, which is our bid ready documents, so we can bid the project. Those are gonna be c- created eh, per phase. So that means that we can bid each individual one uh, separately, or we can bid it all at once if we, if we want to. And then construction support services, which is. Um, a part that we do need, we need RH two to be available for. Available to us during construction, because they have the expertise in, in water tank uh, design and construction. And we're looking on this project at a design schedule of about twelve months, so if we can start here pretty quick. Um, we're probably looking at February, March of next year to be completed with design, assuming that all the permitting doesn't get held up anyplace. So from a design cost and funding component. Um, the total for all the consultant fees for this project are one, is one million six hundred and fifty eight thousand eight hundred forty five dollars. Um, of that, the separation between the three. Phase A one, which like I said, is the water tank, the site access and the connection to ninety third is the main, the big part of it. Uh, one million three hundred and forty eight thousand five hundred ninety five dollars. Um, phase A two is the ninety third water main component, and that's a hundred ninety one thousand two hundred dollars. And uh, phase A three, which is the connection up to old highway ninety nine, is one hundred nineteen thousand fifty dollars. And uh, Dan, did you wanna touch on the funding component?
Yeah, so obviously, you know, just from the design fee alone, this is a, this is a fairly significant project. When we first scoped this out in twenty ten. Um, not even including, you know, the majority of the, the extensions, the, the twelve thousand, you know, plus feet of extension of, of water main. Uh, you know, in the area there, it was about a nine million dollar project just for the tank. Uh, fast forward to twenty twenty four, the estimating that we've been doing, I think, you know, it was mentioned in the. Uh, utility CFP update last year, uh, that we did, that, um, this project went from uh, nine million dollars to twenty two million dollars. Uh, that has uh, increased even further as we've um, worked with our design uh, consultants RH two and HDR. Uh, you know, so we're looking at, you know, potentially upwards of thirty million dollars for the, the totality of this project, including the design fees. Uh, or I'm sorry, that's, that's not included, that's just for the construction costs, uh, for what we're gonna be doing. Um, so obviously, a, a project of such significance of this size, uh, it's not unheard of, you know, for projects that, you know, install twelve thousand plus. Uh, linear feed of water main and put up a, a, you know, a three million gallon uh, reservoir and, and all of the work that needs to go. Um, um, into that, um, so, so fairly significant project. Um, this is gonna be something that we've identified as, um, you know, we look at a, a kind of a twenty eighty uh, kind of funding scenario. Where the operating income, um, you know, from our current rates is really looking at funding through the design pieces, you know, looking at, you know, improving our water system into the future, but. The, the construction, uh, really would be the kind of the eighty percent, which is looking at growth. And so. The majority of this project is being supported by, or is to support future growth. Like as I mentioned earlier, to be in a. To be in a, a, in a situation where, you know, as our community grows, uh, we are able to, uh, you know, provide its water needs. And so, looking at this, kind of like this kind of twenty eighty, uh, you know, existing benefit to uh, eighty percent growth, um, service. Uh, really kind of looks at, looking at um, lo- loans or bonds of some sort to be acquired in the next year or two, uh, you know, to support this. What that does, that is helps kind of, it kind of spreads out the costs. So our current ratepayers. Uh, that are our current customers are not the ones that are necessarily shouldering, um, the, the, the. Uh, large financial burden of projects, something like this, but as new customers come online. Uh, you know, that debt repayment gets, you know, kind of spread out into the future twenty, thirty years. Uh, you know, and so that way it's, it's paid off, um, over time. This isn't the first time, the city currently ho- ha- holds no debt. Um, uh, in its utilities, which is, um, uh, it's been kind of a first since about twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, I wanna say, when we retired our last few bonds. Uh, that the city had acquired, uh, back in the early nineties, early two thousands, when we built the treatment systems. Uh, down there at, at Palermo Wellfield and Bush Wellfield. Uh, those were supported by uh, bonds and debt, and those were paid off. And so, you know, these are, uh, these are good tools that communities such as Tom Water can use. To again, spread the, spread the, the financial um, impact, uh, not only to the utility, but to our ratepayers. Uh, into the future and spread it, um, you know, to help offset the, the, the burdens of growth that are, that were inevitably gonna be coming. So. Uh, that's kind of what that picture looks like. We haven't um, solidified, you know, what, what the bonds are gonna look like, what the interest rates are gonna be. Ideally, they were gonna find something that's got some low income. Uh, or low interest uh, rates for, uh, uh, for the city. And uh, we'll be able to spread that out for as long as uh, the issueers will allow us to spread that out for. Uh, but fairly significant project. And again, one of the reasons why, uh, uh, the, the Public Works Committee really wanted to make sure that uh, city council was aware. Of the, of kind of the, the, the significance of this project, the size of it, and um, kind of how it sets us up for. Uh, you know, for service water, uh, portable water service into the future. I think that's it. I don't think there are any more slides, but. Oh, there we go. So I guess our, our, our request, um, for council tonight is to. Uh, recommend the city council approve and authorize the mayor to sign the service provider. Um, agreement with RH two engineering for the southeast weather, reservoir design phases one, two and three. Uh, which was recommended for consideration, uh, by the Public Works Committee on February eighth.
Councilmember Kathy, do you have a question?
I do, I, just some. First of all, is this property that we, uh, we owned to begin with?
Yes.
And i- is this in what we have called in the past, whatever, urban forest?
I don't know if it's classified as an urban forest, so, and I, I just wanted to make a clarification. So, the city owns the property where the reservoir is gonna be sited. And it owns the easement for the road, but we don't own the property, um, where the road will be, um, cut through. We own the easement, or we provide the easement from the existing property owners.
So is this on, uh, is this, is this on the, um. I couldn't tell from the, the north or the south side of ninety third?
It's the south side.
The south side of ninety third? Where all, where all the. Where all the trees are. So I didn't hear the answer to the question that council member Dahlhoff asked about the removal. Of trees and any estimate of amount or mitigation or anything like that, because that's a, that's a. I used to live down off there and that, and uh. That's heavily treed in, in there.
Yeah, that, the area where the tank is sited is actually used for, um, uh, the, the, the property owners use it to graze cattle. And so there are, there are, there are certainly trees, um, you know, in the area. Um, the easement, um, you know, I think there is a number of trees located within the easement area. Uh, the challenge is, the topography only allows for a certain alignment for roadways through there. Uh, I don't know if we can pull that, um, pull that slide back up that shows kind of the, the easement and the property in and of itself, but. You know, the short, the short story is, this, you know, we go, we have to go through a permitting process, just like anybody else, and we would have to identify. You know, through that process, what trees are, are slated for removal, um, you know, what the mitigation, um, uh, considerations need to be. Uh, just like any other property owner that would, that is looking to develop something, you know, we go through that same process, we had to identify. Uh, what the impacts are gonna be, and we would mitigate for what those impacts are.
Well, Dan, what is the acreage of this project, actually?
Uh, I don't know the actual acreage of the property that we own. Uh, I'd have to, I'd have to get back to you on that one, unless Bill knows it.
Yeah, that, that's fine. Um, yeah, I just, uh, wondered. Those, those things come to mind or have been questions that, uh. You know, people ask and we've been talking about, you know, trees for a while here and.
That would be, like you said, that would be something we definitely would be addressing through the permitting process, just like anybody other, any other development, uh, project.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Dahlhoff, thanks, Mary. I guess following up, um, Dan with council member Kathy is. I don't know the county like requirements for mitigating the type of trees and the size of trees, so that's like. Where I was kind of going, uh, thank you, councilor Kathy, be more direct. Is what does that look like for what we require versus what the county requires? And if the county is less stringent, can we still be more stringent in what we're trying to do to align? With what we do in our city? That's the question.
Uh, I, I, I don't know, I'd have to defer to, to Mike's team to, to, you know, better understand if there is a difference between, uh, the permitting requirements. Um, you know, and if there, if there was, I mean, obviously council could, you know, direct one, one direction or another. Uh, that we'd wanna go through and, you know, and obviously as a, as a utility and as a commitment to being environmental stewards and. Uh, you know, that is something we would, you know, take into consideration.
Thanks, Dan.
So one more, can I, Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Uh, okay, and then I'll go to councilmember Rothhauser.
Oh, sorry, I, I can't see anybody else, so, um. Dan, you said that the new customers coming online would pay more for their water than I'm paying? Is that what you were saying? So my, if somebody built something?
Easiest way to think about it is instead of having to increase rates all at once to make sure that we can cover, you know, the cost of this project. Uh, we would be increasing those rates incrementally over time. So the existing ratepayers are actually gonna be paying less, you know, in rates and those, those kind of impacts over time. You know, the new customers are gonna come in at the higher rates, they're gonna pay the higher connection fees. Uh, if they're a property owner or buddy of the main, they're gonna have to pay those connections, they're gonna have to pay those assessments, you know, for the, for the installation of those mains. And so. You know, this, you know, the, the concept of kind of growth paying for growth is looking at, you know, um. As, as rates need to increase, they're gonna increase every year. As, as rates need to increase, they're going to increase every year, just me, just from an inflation standpoint alone, you know, but you, you know, the existing rate payer. Is not paying, say, let's say we had to raise rates thirty percent to cover this entire project. Well, over the next ten years, we're going to raise it three percent, right? So, you know, it becomes incremental for our existing rate payers versus a large hit. And then the property owners that come on that are actually using, utilizing this as well, they are paying those, those rates of those, the, kind of the, the connection fees and the rates at higher, at higher increments.
So they would begin paying the thirty percent and I'm going to pay it at three percent a year?
Right, so they're just, they're going to be coming in at a higher rate than you are currently. And so instead of having to apply, you know, the financial impact all at one, in one year type thing. It gets spread out over a period of time, and then the customers that are coming on, that's when debt repayment starts to happen. You know, and so that starts to just accumulate over time. And so as you're, as you're a new customer coming in, you are theoretically paying more. Than the rate payers prior to you, just from this moment you, you come in and into the future.
So if people ask us if this is going to raise their water rate, the answer is yes. But. Mine, mine, it'll, yours will go up less than somebody who's brand new in the city.
Basically, yeah.
Is that the truth, or is that, am I just being?
Yes, I mean, you're going to be paying higher rates as your, as a new customer coming on next year, you're going to pay a higher rate than the, than the customers that are, that are existing today. You know, over time. And so, uh, but like, as it was just duly pointed out earlier, there, you know, it's, you know, water is, uh, we, we've had the luxury of. Uh, inexpensive and abundant water for many, you know, many years. Um, that dynamic is changing profoundly, not just in our area, but across the world. Uh, water is a much more precious resource. It is, um. The treatment costs are increasing, you know, the acquisition, the development costs of water are increasing. All of that makes water more expensive moving into the future. And so, you know, anybody, uh, that is getting water today. Is getting it at a lesser rate than the cost of somebody who's going to come on tomorrow, so to speak.
Plus our water tastes better than most people's.
I like to think so.
I think so. Thanks, Dan.
Michael, or Councilmember Altuser said that his question was answered, so I'm going to can't, uh, go to Councilmember Swarthout.
Um, when we were talking about the forest there, um, that we'll be putting the, um, access road through. So as part of the design or permitting process, does. Will they be, when they're surveying it, do they survey the types of trees that are out there? And, um. Would they know, like, you know, if we're concerned about some of them being older trees, um, is that all documented or how, I don't know if that's part of the process?
Uh, I'll let Bill jump in if he wants, but you know, my understanding is this, yes, as they do those preliminary surveys to understand kind of, you know, the, the totality of what the, the, the. Permitted development is going to be. Uh, I, I do believe maybe there is some general classifications of what the trees are, but it's more kind of like diameter, um, of what those trees are, where the larger stands. Um, and so that way you can make a determination of what needs to be mitigated for, if you're taking out a number of trees that have larger, um, diameter. Diameters than, than some of the smaller ones. Uh, but that is part of that, that is part of that survey that, that gets done in, in, um, earlier part of the project.
Yeah, those, uh, they'll flag the easement area so that someone can go out and look at it. And see where it is. And then when they run through their, their survey, like Dan was saying, they'll, they'll measure the caliber of the trees. How, how big they are. And then as a general rule, they'll, they'll identify what those trees are. Um, especially if we ask them to do that. So it's, it's not a problem. It's done on most projects, Frank. Especially when it comes to trees. So we'll have a good indication of what, what, um, is going to be impacted. The, we, we have a forty foot easement. For that access road, the road's not going to be forty feet wide. The reason why it's that wide is really for, uh, sloping. So it's the ability to slope the road because it's going to, it's not going to match the existing grade. So. There is a little bit of wiggle room in there in case, you know, on the edges, we find a tree, um, that, that we could try to protect or save. So that is possible, but it is, it is a really tough location to get from point A to point B. Um, so. You know, a lot of that is going to be removed in order to build the access road.
Councilmember Altuser.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. So, so Dan, what's before us tonight? Is in agreement to do consulting, analysis, planning, design. But, and we expect to get those results back within about a calendar year. But before really we go to issue bonds or ground is broken, or before any concrete steps are taken. This would have to return to council for a clear vote to proceed. Is that correct?
So really kind of the next steps, I mean, this is the, this, this, uh, action that you would be taking tonight is authorizing the city to move forward with the design and permitting of this facility. Generally as conceived here, you know, there, there may be some opportunities for some check-in points along the way. Um, to just kind of maybe get some feedback about how things might be progressing. Maybe there is an alternative layout that. Uh, you know, the engineers might recommend us considering for, you know, the easement or the roadway to, to the reservoir. Uh, you know, there might be some opportunities, you know, for that, but this is really authorizing the city and the utilities to move forward with the design and permitting. Of the, uh, you know, of the, uh, the reservoir and, and the, and the, and the road up to it. You know, once we get through the design piece of this, then really the permitting aspect, not only the permitting that the city has to do. Uh, for itself, you know, again, looking at, you know, those, those impacts, uh, pieces and the stuff that our community development review teams, um, um, take a look at. This also has to be submitted to the, the Department of Health. Um, and so this is really getting this project to a place that we can submit a project report to the Department of Health. That they get to review it, make sure it meets all of, uh, Department of Health standards for water, for a water system. Uh, and then once that approval is, um, done, then we're really set up and we're really set up to go out to bid. Um, for construction. And that would be really, you know, without some, you know, kind of just some progress updates along the way. Uh, that would be the next council action would be authorizing, you know, the city to move forward with, with. Providing authorization to go solicit bids. And then, um. Um, authorizing the, the city to contract with the, uh, the, the lowest responsible bidder. For the project. So that's really kind of like the, the, the major check-in points, you know, moving forward would be, you know, this is the design and permitting piece. And then we come back for a construction piece, um, down the road. Like I said, you know, if, if you'd like, we can certainly schedule some check-in points along the way just, to kind of, uh, review how the, how the. Uh, the design pieces is, is moving along.
Uh, yes, uh, City Administrator Parks.
Yes, so, uh, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Altuser, yes, uh, the council would absolutely have to authorize any debt that would be issued for us to move forward with any funding. So, uh, Dan's correct, uh, you would have to authorize the bids, uh, authorize us to go out to bid and enter into any contract. But any kind of a debt financing would also require action from the city council.
Okay, so I see Councilmember Kathy's hand up. I'll first go to Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you. I just clarifying question then. So what I'm seeing is that for tonight is to move this to the next meeting for council consideration for discussion and approval. I'm wondering why we didn't do that tonight? I'm confused.
I think the, the request is.
Yeah, as I said, the request tonight is for authorization to proceed and have, you know, uh, authorize the, the mayor to sign the service, uh, agreement with. RH two engineering for the Southeast Water Reservoir Design Phases one, two, and three.
Okay, all right. So what I'm reading in the recommended action is not correct. We want to approve it tonight. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Final.
Now I'm on the same page.
The final slide is the recommended action, the one in the packet is incorrect.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. So Councilmember Kathy.
So in light of that question, what it is, is we are saying. Yes, to this whole project tonight, even in light of all the questions that we've asked. We don't know, you know, for example, we don't design mains. The whole thing. I mean, this is, this is the last, um. Chance there's questions about anything about how it goes or the. Trees or the road or, you know, the understory, the overstory, the whole, the whole thing. I mean, we're, we're basically just saying, go ahead and do this project, correct? Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, that, that would be what we're asking is to move forward with the design and permitting. As I, as I noted, you know, we can probably, we can come back at certain check-in points along the way to kind of let you know.
It's done.
How it's progressing, uh, but we can't really move forward with design. Um, you know, or permitting, going through these things to answer, probably, you know, potentially some of these questions that you have, uh, that you have. Give you answers until we move through this design fix.
Well, but, but I mean, the questions that I have by the time, or others have, what, whatever. There's, there's no, there's no changing because the answer is it's permitted. So th- this is, this is a huge frustration for me in the way we do this. I mean, this is, this is, you're, you're not doing anything any different. Dan, with your things, but, you know, all of these questions are. Good questions. But, you know, we're going to go ahead and design it and, um. Do the road, we'll see about the trees, whether, it's just, it's just the way it, it's done and. So. Controlled, what control do we have over, over development in situations like this? Or in, in balancing environment and stuff if. Tonight you give, uh, you know, permission to. Do it, we'll see, we'll see how it works.
Councilmember Altuser.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I hear you, Councilmember Kathy. I, I think I would characterize what, how I consider this action to be slightly different. Um, then, and respectfully, Dan, slightly, maybe I, I would nuance one of those things a little bit differently. Like I, I think if we take action tonight on this, that that certainly sets, sets us down a path to proceed. I don't think there's really any debating that really. Um, but in terms of, I, I think like some of the questions that you're asking, what, what I'm hearing you say, Dan, is that. It's impossible for us to know some of those answers until we do the due diligence of design. And we have to actually expend funds to design the thing, right? Like. We can't really know what impact the road would have unless we come up with a blueprint and a design for what the road would look like. And I think that action tonight means that over the next twelve months, we'll be scoping those things out. And then we will be getting presentations about. All right, you told us to design it and work with our consultants, and this is the product that resulted from that, and this is what the tank will look like, and here is how wide the road is. And this is what's going to happen with all the trees, and this is the phasing and so on and so forth, and all sorts of details that. We don't really know the answers to right now because we haven't done that due diligence. So like, certainly I, I think that, uh, a vote to do this tonight means that we are proceeding. Um, with coming up with those design elements, but, um. There's, I would say if we have to solicit bids, we have to award bids, we have to actually do a loan to come up with the bonding or the funding. There's at least, I think, three more instances where we would actually be voting before really any action is done at all on the. Ground is my understanding. Is that right, Dan?
Yeah, I would say you characterize that perfectly. And, you know, and also, you know, as, as I mentioned, we put this package together. Uh, we bring it back to, uh, uh, council, it's just kind of see, like you said, where, you know, what the results were of this action. Um, and then, and then after that, we go to the Department of Health for that, kind of that final, um, you know, final, um, acknowledgement that the project can move forward. Um, and then from there, where, you know, or in, in, in there, you know, probably concurrently is we're looking for that funding, uh, to acquire the funding. And then we're also. Um, once you get the permissions, uh, from, you know, everybody to move forward, we get the permission from the funding, move forward, we got Department of Health permission. Um, um, then we move forward with, uh, construction, uh, bidding. And so that will be the final step in that process.
Okay, and I, I don't want to like minimize this decision point by any means. This is like a big deal for our future. It's also one thing that I'm, I'm particularly excited about, particularly from a fire flow perspective, like. This is an expensive project, like there's no overlooking the fact that this is an expensive project. I think there's also no overlooking the fact that like it will literally save lives. Like if we are able to actually build that up, there will be lives that will be saved, maybe not in the first year of the existence of this project, or the second, or the tenth, or who knows? But at some point in time. Doing this project will mean that lives will be saved. And that's like, I don't know if we can, I, I don't know how you put a price on anything like that. Um, so this is like a, a very important project. And to speak to some of the concerns you said, Councilmember Kathy, about. You know, process, when we were talking about this at the Public Works Committee, you know, there's a reason why we didn't put this on consent. So that we could have this discussion at a public meeting. That is televised and people can provide public comment and speak to so that we could talk about this more thoroughly and have this discussion. Because this is a big step for our city's future. So. Yeah, that's all I.
Great. Any other questions? Councilmember Jefferson?
Um, yes, maybe if we can have periodic updates on the project once a quarter, every six months. Especially when it comes to those trees, so we can get the warm and fuzzy that we're doing all we can for the trees. I'd be very comfortable with that.
Great, thank you. Any other question? All right, so I am looking for a. Yeah, can we put the motion back up since that was the correct one? Sorry. Okay. 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 Go ahead.
Um, I would like to, um, author, the city council approve and authorize the mayor to sign the service provider agreement with RH two Engineering Incorporated. For the Southeast Water Reservoir Design Phases one, two, and three. This agreement was recommended, oh.
And I second.
By you.
Okay, this recommend, this agreement was recommended for consideration of the Public Works Committee meeting on February eighth, twenty twenty four.
And I second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, second by Councilmember Jefferson. Any additional discussion on this motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in.
Uh, one second.
Oh, Councilmember Gaby.
Is there an amendment to the, to that resolution that, uh, periodic, uh, will be submitted?
I don't know if we need an acknowledgement, staff has already agreed to do that. So.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item is the Thurston County Opioid Abatement Council Independent Subcommittee and. City Administrator Parks is going to present.
Thank you. And we have a presentation. A brief one. Uh, so we just wanted to come to you and give you an update on the progress. Towards implementing the Thurston County Opioid, Opioid Abatement Council Independent Subcommittee. So, next slide please. So just a little bit of background. So in April of twenty twenty two, the city council authorized the mayor to sign. Tom Water as a participant on the One Washington Memorandum of Understanding. Uh, that memorandum is basically, um, outlines how opioid lawsuit funds are going to be allocated across jurisdiction, in jurisdictions. In the state that participate in the MOU. And then in March twenty twenty three, the, um, National Opioid Settlement Allocation Agreement Number Two was authorized. Um, for the city of Tom Water to participate in. And that basically enco- incorporated the settlements that had been reached by the state of Washington with Walmart, Tiva. Um, Allergen, Allergen, CVS, and Walgreens. Um, and if I get any of this wrong, Karen is here to back me up because she knows it from inside and out. Thanks, Karen. Um, and then in July of twenty twenty three, where I was here for this one, um, there were two things that were accomplished. And there were two, um, um, partner inter-local agreements. One was the inter-local agreement to form the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance Regional, uh, um, organization, which was, uh. Authorized and required by the One Washington MOU. And then a second inter-local agreement called the Thurston County and Cities Independent Subcommittee Interlocal Agreement was also signed. So the regional ILA was required by the One Washington MOU, as I said. Um, it included Cowless, Cowlets, Lewis, Gray's Harbor, Mason, Thurston, and Waukeaham Counties. Um, it establishes, um, the Regional Opioid Abatement Council for that Cascade Pacific, um, Action Alliance region. And it also delegated local authority for each county within that region to form its own independent opioid abatement council. Uh, for each of those, uh, separate counties. So the Thurston County Interlocal Agreement, it specifically defined the duties of the Thurston County Opioid Abatement Council. So the Thurston County Interlocal Agreement, it specifically defined the duties of the Thurston County Opioid Abatement Council. Um, and it um identified the jurisdictions uh would appoint an elected official, each of the jurisdictions, including Thurston County, Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater, those are the signers on the interlocal agreement. And then the primary responsibility of the opioid abatement council is to ensure that the funds that are used um are are used in a way that is uh consistent with the One Washington requirements. Next slide, please. So then the update, so um since that time, over the fall and uh later summer and fall and winter, staff has been working on details for how the Thurston County Council is going to be um operating and how it gets formed. Uh, mayors and councils have been working through their various processes for appointing members, uh appointing the elected official representative for their jurisdiction. Uh, Mayor Sullivan has appointed Councilmember Dahlhoff uh to be the city of Tum- Tumwater's uh representative. And then um beginning actually in twenty twenty two and and continuing through this past summer, there've been several different discussions at the executive staff level about the benefits of potentially pooling the respective jurisdictions uh settlement amounts. And so um one of the things that has been contemplated is whether or not um it might have um uh some benefits for the region to be able to look at pooling those settlement funds. Um, it could mean a more effective implementation of the One Washington Plan in Thurston County. It could um maximize the impact um on the opioid epidemic, hopefully. There's been conversations about what that would look like uh if it were to be uh pooled resources. Um, there were discussions around um how the opioid abatement council might operate similar to the Regional Housing Council. Um, if the funds were suggest, were pooled, um, and so there's a lot to be done still. And um there is uh, at this point in time, the uh opioid abatement council is going to be um starting up very soon, uh likely within the uh next few months. It will be supported primarily through county staff. Um, and the likely first tasks of the opioid abatement council will be to first learn about the very specific parameters for utilization of these funds, which are controlled by the One Washington MOU and the One Washington Plan. Um, and to also discuss this idea of whether or not there would be benefit to pooling resources. Um, if that were to occur, the interlocal agreement would likely have to be amended to authorize um that pooling. Um, and so that's uh something that the opioid abatement council will likely be looking at um in its first few um meetings. So with that, any, I'm available, I can answer any questions, or if I can't, I bet Karen can.
Any questions? Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Have the other jurisdictions finalized their appointments?
I do not believe they have all completed that. They go through a different process than we do sometimes, but I believe they're getting close.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, I would expect to hear fairly soon from the county.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, and this is just informational.
Just informational.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Alright, with that, we're going to go to committee reports. And the first one is Public Health and Safety, Councilmember Agabi.
So, for the Public Health and Safety, uh, we didn't have a meeting this um February, but there's a meeting scheduled for March twelfth at eight o'clock. And on our agenda, we have a thus far, on our agenda, we have a fire mobilization and interagency agreement and crisis response and pilot project. Those are the two that I see on our agenda for now.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Althouser, General Government Committee.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee met on Valentine's Day, February fourteenth last week. Was joined by uh Councilmember Kathy. Um, we did not select a committee chair, we'll be doing that at our next meeting, but we did get through three other substantive items, all of which were on our, or two of which were on our consent agenda earlier tonight, the ILA between Lacey, Olympia, Tenino, Tumwater, Yale, and Thurston County and the TRPC, that's about our housing element update. Uh, we recommended that for action tonight, and thank you, everyone, for approving that. And then our ILA between the city and the Port of Olympia for the Bush Prairie Habitat Conservation Plan, which just deals with some automated dates and extensions. That was our meeting.
Great, thank you. Uh, next is the budget, or sorry, Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, two of the items that were on our consent calendar, um items F and G were on, discussed at the February eighth Public Works Meeting. Our next Public Works Meeting is scheduled for this Thursday at eight AM, so Thursday, February twenty second, and we have a number of items, we're gonna be looking at an ILA for uh climate mitigation. Um, we're also looking to grant agreement with the Department of Commerce for the City Hall Solar Plus uh Storage Feasibility and Design Project. We have a grant agreement with the Washington Department of Commerce for the Tumwater Library Solar and Storage Feasibility and Design Project. And then we'll be hearing about about the Barnes Lake Management District, the Budget and Work Plan Review, and then we'll also be um amending the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine Six Year Transportation Improvement Program.
Busy meeting. And Budget and Finance has not met. Uh, so with that, we will move to Mayor City Administrator Report, and I will start out with the City Administrator.
Thank you, Councilmembers. I will first apologize for neglecting to send you a Friday update last Friday. I apologize, it slipped through the cracks. And so I'll have double uh information to send you on this Friday. Uh, so first, I'd like to share with you that uh last Monday, we had a community conversation. Um, as you are aware, with a a lot of people on, and it was regarding the Parks Ordinance Amendments that have been the topic of conversation since um uh November of this last year. Um, we had over a hundred people uh attend. Um, I think that there were many people who were concerned about the potential implications of what they understood could happen if the Parks Ordinance uh amendments were adopted as presented. Um, we were able to provide, I think, some um more accurate and um and clarified information about what those ordinance amendments do and what they do not do. And there was a lot of feedback. Uh, there were a lot of questions. Um, I had good help from uh the uh the uh different directors that were there, helping to answer questions as subject matter experts. Um, we are in the process now of um compiling all of the input and uh reviewing that in order to uh make a recommendation to the uh City Council. I would anticipate that we will, once we get that done, we will be scheduling first a work session with you to review all of that information. Probably then followed by a council meeting at which we'll ask you to take some action with regard to the Parks Ordinance. Uh, it was a good meeting. Um, I think that um it was a necessary meeting, and it really gave people an opportunity uh to be heard in terms of their very legitimate concerns. Secondly, on the good news side of things, uh last Tuesday was the Tumwater Youth Performing Arts Showcase. Uh, it was held at the Washington uh Center. Um, it is the first time in the Tumwater School District history that there's been a joint effort with the city of Tumwater. They were that, and we were showcasing over five hundred and sixty performing arts students um to a sold-out crowd of al- almost a thousand people uh last Tuesday. Um, it was a partnership between our Parks and Recreation Arts Program and the Tumwater School District. There were ten Tumwater School District music teachers that worked together to plan and coordinate the two-hour showcase. Um, and that showcase featured elementary, military, excuse me, elementary, middle and high school students, and some of them may eventually be military. My apologies. Uh, many of the performances were from different schools performing together as a single unit. And um the end of Act uh One was two hundred and fifty elementary, middle, and high school students uh performing We Are The World, which, according to Todd Anderson, was a tearjerker. So we are very pleased with this event. We are hoping that it is a continuing one and um really a great way to showcase the the youth uh uh in our community and the talent that we have here. Uh, and lastly, uh, the uh Strategic Priorities Retreat is this Saturday. Um, plant plans are well underway. Uh, we're wrapping those up, and we hope to see you from eight thirty to four, same location, same entry door uh at the Mountain View Church. Uh, it's just that we will be to the left when you come in that door uh adjacent to I five instead of to the right, so right across the hallway. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alright, for my report, uh I attended the Inner City Transit Authority Board February seventh. And uh one of the main items in that was, in addition to uh to introducing our, the new operator class of uh the first operator class of twenty twenty four, which one of them was one of our seasonal workers uh for the parks and recs, so that was kind of a surprise. Uh, but inner city transit is amazing, and to go from from uh seasonal work to full-time um uh transit driver is quite a, you know, quite a career move, so. Uh, so they also elected uh the new uh authority uh elected uh uh cabinet, so this would be that the Chair of the Inner City Transit Authority Board is Clark Gilman from Olympia. The uh Vice Chair is uh Carolina Mejia, who is the um from the county. Uh, I was appointed to do the Thurston Regional Planning Council Representative for Inner City Transit. The Transportation Policy Board was uh Justin Belk, and the Pension 401K Committee Member was Sue Pierce. Um, so there uh we also did um some uh review of some of the uh the items, since our new general manager, we will be working on how to do the um do her assessment, and since we haven't had to do that for a new GM for over ten years, um, there's a committee that'll be working on that. Our next inner city transit meeting will be tomorrow, which is the twenty first. And uh, and I also, other items that I attended was, I attended the Thurston Chamber Meeting uh last Wednesday, and they had a presentation on the uh Red Cross, and so it was very enlightening on um all the services that they do. I mean, it was fascinating. Sometimes you just take these things for granted, but it was pretty interesting, so. And then this Thursday uh is the uh State Association Washington uh Mayor's Association Washington Cities Mayor's Exchange, and sent the mayors of of Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater will be the host mayors, and with that, I will also be presenting a tour of our brewery district for all the mayors in the state, so that are attending the conference, so that will be very interesting, so. With that, I will turn it over to uh Council Reports and uh Councilmember Swarthout, do you want to start?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I didn't have any meetings this this cycle, so no report.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Althouser.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I will also be brief. The Regional Housing Council has not met since our last council meeting, but we are meeting a week from tomorrow. So I will have a report on that meeting at our next council meeting.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Two of my meetings were the Thurston County Open Response Task Force, one was a Prevention Subcommittee, and one was the overarching committee, which the summary is what uh Administrator Parks said, so it was, it was amazing. It's great, great summary. Totally linked up together. Uh, other meeting I had was Thurston County 911 Communications, where we did an evaluation of our director, Wendy Hill. And then I also attended the Community Conversations, representing council, and the takeaway I had is Lisa, uh Administrator Parks did an amazing job with the temperature in that room. And also that I think it is important as we move forward, and hopefully this comes up on Saturday at our retreat, is what is that engagement of council with the work of staff, and how is that complimentary and supportive? And I, what I heard from people there, that they wanted to see council, so thank you for making the space for me to represent council.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Agabi.
So, my uh February has been very, very, very busy. So, let's start with, I believe I believe on Sunday, February night, I rode with Officer Peter Navarro on the uh Tumwater uh police. And um it was a quiet Sunday in the sense that we didn't have calls that has to do with enforcement. But we did run into a peculiar uh issue that has been happening in Tumwater, that there's somebody grabbing uh mails and dumping them um wherever. So that particular Sunday, we were going uh somewhere over there. And uh he said that uh he had just gone by that road about thirty minutes before uh he came to get me, and there were no mails on the road, so when we were patrolling, there were about, I'd say about fifty to only pieces of uh mail, white envelopes from the Secretaries of State Office. So somebody must have grabbed those mail and do whatever they wanted to do and just it kind of dumped them on the road. So we were picking those uh in the rain. And then around the corner from there was also a mail box that had been broken into, and somebody has stole a a check, so. It was not uh heavy, but it was peculiar in the sense that that is what has been going on in Tumwater. So that was that. And then uh on the twelfth of February, I had a JASCOM meeting. That was our first uh meeting of the year, so we had uh nominations for officers, Lisa um was our current chair, Lisa was, we nominated as chair, and I was nominated as vice chair. And then we went over the statistics uh for twenty twenty two at the Joint Animal Services um Center. And in terms of uh no, no, were the uh event for twenty twenty three, the city of Tumwater have a significant uh cause to the center. And while that uh is significant, it does not necessarily pretend that uh we were having uh issues with animal services, because some of the calls could have been somebody calling for, I lost my cat. How do I find my cat? Oh, I need to give up my cat for adoption. So those are the uh variability in the cost, so we cannot quantify what the costs were, other than the fact that they were significant. And then um so I did, at the center, what JASCOM wanted to do for going forward in twenty twenty three is uh they want to see uh they want to see a curb in the good of outdoor cat, outdoor cat in Thurston County. So, if you decrease the growth, that will also decrease the number of intake at the center, which is not necessarily a button. And then transferring of uh rescue cats went up some by seven, seven percent from two thousand and twenty two to in twenty twenty three. Looking ahead, they at the center would like to have a day foster program. So imagine you are uh adopting an animal, and then you go to the center, you actually get to hang out with the animal, so you look at uh the totality of the temperament, and uh you're able to make that decision, if this is an animal that you want to go home with you. So I think that is a very, very good program. So that program is going to be debuting in July. And uh it is called Launching Animal Services Volunteer Program for JASCOM. And uh I think I just had to note uh what event at the center that I could report out. So, on um my third meeting for this February was for the Transportation Board, Thurston County Transportation Board, and this was our first meeting of the year, so naturally, we had our officers uh nominations. We we nominated Randy as our chair, and then we had two other vice chair. And I didn't get their names because uh they went too fast for me, it was too early. But um we had a presentation by Pugisun Energy that uh so Pugisun Energy wanted to tell us what they've been doing in Thurston County. so Pigeon Sun Energy wanted to tell us what they've been doing in Thurston County. And then when it came to the Q and A, uh, part, that went southward. And that was because I don't know if you know, if you receive an email from Pigeon Sun about using less energy because we were overusing our energy. So, um, there were a lot of questions that were asked because Pigeon Sun had told us that, uh, oh, we're doing a bunch of, uh, good work here and we're going to be doing, uh, we have all this energy efficiency, uh, energy storage, and we have energy from, um, uh, solar and what have you. I cannot tune out because to me what they were saying was we're doing what we're currently doing. Because if you remember, some dams have been removed. So if you remove dams, so you don't have as much energy that you're creating, right? But they said they were actually being energy efficient. So, okay. Uh, we talked about EV, electric, uh, electric, uh, EV and, uh, metering, which is good. But in terms of our population and good in Thurston County, how they will move forward with, uh, making sure that every, everybody have energy sufficiency with that sending that email to not use enough, uh, energy. They weren't able to answer that question. So on that note, that is my, um, report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I met with Olympia and beyond today. This afternoon, we discussed the results of the Visioning Workshop results because we hired an expert CSL funded with grant from PAC Mountain. And we plan to use his report to finalize our destination master plan during our board retreat on the eighteenth of June at the Olympia Country Club. I have a personal report on the state of senior homelessness for you today. During the last two weeks, I've met with three several different nonprofits to discuss rental assistance and the increase of homelessness amongst seniors, which is the fastest growing group of homelessness. There's a perception out there that homelessness are the mentally ill, the drug addicted, um, kids or young people that we see living on the streets. And in actuality, these are seniors that I see on a daily basis. As we talk about our parks ordinance, we have seniors cooking in our parks. I've seen them making coffee and cooking. We have seniors in the daytime, living with their animals in the park. I've seen personally an increase. I'll, I'll, I'll talk more about that later because I'm talking to some executive directors that are dealing with it on a day to day basis. Um, I spoke with Brian Winthrop, uh, Senior Services and, um, Craig Chance from the, the Housing Authority. And I wanted them, encouraged them to apply for our CBDG funding that's coming up. And I asked them, how can we partner together to help solve problems now? Our seniors need help now. They're becoming homeless every day. Bryant said he can't afford the cost. A lot of them can't afford the cost of home share, which is about five hundred to six hundred dollars a month. Some can't afford two or three hundred. He has a long list of seniors. So we can help with that. Um, right now, I spoke to him about how does it look like for you to expand the home share program in Tomwater? Currently, Lacey funds them eighteen thousand dollars annually. Perhaps can we do that? He said, um, he would target our Tomwater seniors and to help focus more on them. Um, it will be more challenging for him to, um, help with more than rent share. For example, I asked for those who can't afford rent, living in our, in our trailer parks, can we help with rent payments? Maybe some type of voucher, two, three hundred dollars a month. He said that will be challenging for him because he'd have to hire staff and the cost can go well over two hundred, uh, thousand dollars. When I spoke with Craig Chance from the Housing Authority, he basically said, Angela, I'm doing the best with what I can. Um, sixty percent of seniors are coming in goes to his home sharing, uh, program where they help with rent. Uh, excuse me, the rent sharing program. Sixty percent of the help is going to them. Um, he recommended, I said, how can you help us now, uh, Craig? And he basically said he recommends home share. I want to share a story with you of an eighty year old voucher recipient. He was so happy to give her, um, housing. So he was waiting for her to shuffle in to the center so he can give her the good news. It took her about five minutes to come in with her walker. And she was so happy that she was knitting a scarf. And she gave that scarf to the, the woman who helped her. We have eighty year old seniors living in their cars. We have seniors who can't afford to eat. Um, we're seeing that in Tomwater. I asked Craig, I asked both of those gentlemen, do our state and federal elected representatives know this? And he said, Angela, I try and tell them as much as I can. I told him, you keep spreading the word. Tell everyone that you know that we need help from the state and the federal government. Our budget is limited. Like we had a war on drugs. Like we had help for COVID. We need help to house our seniors and to feed our seniors. And if you ever need me to testify at the legislature, I will make time because this shouldn't be. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, going ahead, I will go into, uh, Councilmember Von, Von Houts.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my meeting schedule has been light, but last Friday I was able to attend a meeting with the two other new council members from City of Olympia and City of Lacey. We met at the Thurston County Chamber of Commerce and got a tour of the chamber and a little bit more familiarity with some of the great programs that the chamber sponsors. Um, one that I'm really excited about is, uh, Leadership Thurston County Youth that will be happening actually in Tomwater this summer at New Market. So it was a really great meeting. It was good to meet my new colleagues over in the cities of Olympia and Lacey and, um, lots of good work happening with our partnerships with Thurston County Chamber.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm on vacation and the last thing I thought that anywhere entered my mind about packing was my calendar and the notes from any of my meetings. So, uh, I, I'll just tell you the, the meetings I attended since our last, our last meeting, uh, General Government Committee as Councilmember Althouser reported and the Olympia Regional Clean Air Agency. And I will be attending the Regional Housing Council next week. So, and I was able to, um, wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day at an eight, the eight o'clock meeting that Michael and I had. I felt it was okay to start today with, with him on Valentine's Day. So, um, that's my report.
Great, thank you. All right, so with that, uh, we are now going to go into, uh, an executive session. Uh, so the council will now, now be meeting an executive session to this, to discuss collective bargaining pursuant to RCW forty two thirty point one four zero sub four sub B. And the council will be in executive session and I am told for twenty minutes. So we will be back at nine o'clock. Uh, and so we are recessed until that time. We will be taking action following our executive session. So we will be coming back in and making and making, taking action. So we will be back at nine o'clock.
So the meeting will reconvene in four minutes.
I'm calling the meeting back to get uh back to order. It is now nine o'clock. So we are out of our executive session. Um, I am asking if we have any um, any motions. Uh, oh, Councilmember Dahlhoff, and then, yeah.
I moved to recommend council approve the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six bargaining agreement between the city of Tomwater and the chauffeurs. Teamsters and helpers, why does that throw me off? Helpers local number two five two.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Dahlhoff, seconded by Councilmember Althouser. Any discussion on the motion? I'm sorry, is that Councilmember Kathy? What did you need? What what was that?
Uh, nothing.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. And with that, with no other business, we will be adjourned. And thank you, everyone, and see you next week at our work session.